Much allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 19th County Commission meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones, that the meeting documents are on the end of the counter, next to Commissioner Kelly, and that Robert has listening devices right there.
Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of August 12th, 2014.
Move the bills. Or, excuse me, move the second minutes, excuse me.
The motion is second to approve the minutes. Are there any additions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three, your bills to be paid in the amount of $631,507.51.
Now I'll move the bills.
Motion is second for the bills. Are there any comments? Commissioner Barth.
I would just say, there are five individual bills for transporting bodies for the coroner. This week's bills.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The register of deeds official statement of revenue collected during July 2014 has been received and placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Any questions for Jen? Look for a motion for routine.
Move for a table.
And a motion and kind of a second on the, and a second. Any questions for Jen on the routine? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is consider a special personnel action request to reclassify vacant juvenile correction officer one position to a community supervision monitor. Jen Ex.
Good morning Commissioners. I know that you've received a briefing memo on this request already. JDC would like to reclassify one of their vacant juvenile correctional officer one positions to a community's supervision monitor. And this is to aid in their efforts in working toward the JDAI initiatives. This reclassification is still the same pay grade, pay grade 12, so there's no budgetary impact whatsoever. In addition to that, we'd like to request formal approval to begin recruitment immediately if you do approve the reclassification. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Also, the Director of JDC, Jamie Gravitt, is here. He can answer questions as well.
Are there any questions for Jamie or Jen?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jen.
Item six are application for abatement. Kyle Helseth and Pam Nelson will present.
Good morning Commissioners. Kyle Helseth, Director of Equalization. We bring forward this morning one request for abatement for a Michael Height on record ID, on record ID 80023, 2013 property taxes in the amount of $12,7158. This is a reclassification of the owner occupied.
Sir, motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle. Is Pam here?
Don't believe Pam's here, so.
Take it.
The second one is a request for an assessment freeze on record ID 33056 in the amount of $649.57.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle.
Item number seven, notices and requests. A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for shingle replacement and other roof repairs at county-owned facility at 1401 West 51st Street, Sioux Falls.
We were briefed on this last week.
I'll make the motion.
The motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
And item B is a notice from the East Dakota Water Development District of their meeting at 10:45 a.m. on Friday, August 22nd, at Buffalo Ridge Resort Business Center, 1312 Co. 2 Street, Gary, South Dakota.
Commissioner Barth has a comment?
Say on that, Professor Yevi Karlsgaard, who's a hydrologist up at SDSU and often goes to those meetings, has been valuable to our area, working on bioreactors for farm drainage runoff, is leaving there and going to the University of Minnesota. It's a bit of a loss for us. I plan to attend this meeting, though, and Gary.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Barth.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien. John Pecas.
Thank you Cindy. This is on DPNO number 58398 in the amount of $3,822.66. The applicant is currently requesting a compromise and release of two liens in full with no further payment. The liens actually total $1,148.25. The liens relate to both the initial involuntary commitment action that was initiated by her, apparently, oh, excuse me, I think I'm on the wrong, I'm on last week's, excuse me. The benefit of having computers. I was gonna say, this sounds really familiar.
Yeah.
You know what? You know what? I am on the next week's and I've got the wrong one on my computer. Yeah, thanks. I just checked. Yeah, it's weird. Okay, let's see. Yeah, this is the one that I originally got. This applicant currently is requesting a compromise of lien. This is in the amount of $3,822.66. The applicant requests a compromise in full with no further payment. Apparently, he is making an offer of possibly making a payment up to $1,000. But he would like to air out the facts of this particular circumstance before we make that particular motion. Two charges represent the bulk of the total lien balance. They are in relationship to an abuse and neglect case involving the applicant's minor child. The abuse and neglect case is a result of an incident that occurred while the applicant was incarcerated. One charge in the amount of $1,582 was submitted by the public advocates office for the representation of the child. The other charge was for court-appointed attorney services in the amount of $1,944.06, and that was for the attorney to represent the applicant as father of the child. So there's a charge for both the child and a charge for also the father. The lien, of course, was, includes a public defender services in the amount of $296 for an unrelated matter that they obviously helped the applicant. The applicant indicates he's been out of prison approximately four years. He works full-time, he's hoping to buy a house. He became aware of the lien while working and discovered that through his realtor and mortgage broker, that to get a pre-qualified mortgage, he had to deal something with this lien. Currently, he lists annual income of $38,000. He has assets totaling $1,078. It includes one 2000 GMC Jimmy and $78 in his bank account. He has liability and monthly expenses of approximately $750 in rent, $550 for insurance, car and medical bills, and another obligation for $80 a month. Because he was not involved with the actions relating to the abuse and neglect case, the applicant asked that the commission compromise the release without any further payment or upon full payment of $1,000. He indicates that he is current on child support and he is requesting to make payments to satisfy the delinquent child support that he currently owes. What I would do in this particular instance is I'll make a motion to go up to a half of basically $1,311.33.
I'll second that motion.
Was it $1,311?
That's approximately 50 percent.
Okay, I have a motion and a second for 50 percent. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Barth.
I have a question. You know, if this A and N thing happened, why is the mother not listed as on the lien as well?
She may be enlisted. We just don't have access to that particular lien. It's a separate lien that she would be responsible for as well.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Benega.
This is for John or for Kirsten. Isn't the divorce decree limiting or itemizing all of the liens and all of the expenses when this thing is finalized? Why is that not part of the conversation?
Typically, in my experience in working with divorce judgments and decrees, what they'll do is they'll actually accept the obligation of what they owe, and the problem is that a lot of times, these type of liens aren't investigated by either the defendant's attorney or the plaintiff's attorney. And so what happens is, currently, there'll be language that's signed off by the judge that'll say, both parties are liable for the debts due and owing in their possession at this time. And so what happens is that they are obligated to pay for what is owed on these particular accounts for their minor child.
So they're just certifying that they're correct whether they know they are or not?
Right, correct. What's interesting, though, is sometimes you'll actually see in divorce decrees where one party will in fact say, I'll accept all of the liens from Minnehaha County, I'll pay those off, and then they'll get a dollar-for-dollar discount on some other asset in the divorce, and then they'll come in after the fact here and they'll get, pay 50 cents on the dollar. So, you know, amazingly, there are some divorce attorneys that are crafty enough to know that, you know, if you accept all the liens from Minnehaha County, you get a huge discount. So we'll take that and we'll pawn off the rest of the bill for a dollar-for-dollar against our soon-to-be ex-spouse.
Kirsten. And if I could add to, it's my position anyway, advising you legally, that a divorce decree can't change their obligations to us under leads. Now, they may not be in compliance with the divorce settlement if they don't comply with those terms, but I don't think we're bound to accept who is responsible for what amount of money by any divorce decree.
Yeah, he is, he is correct. Just because you have a divorce decree saying that, you know, you're gonna pay off this credit card debt, if the other party doesn't pay it off, that's not binding on the credit card company. They can go after both and later on, inevitably, that might wind up in a contempt of court action for impugning my credit after we're divorced. But the reality is that just because you get a divorce decree, it's not binding on a third party.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Additionally, though, his note does not say his wife did this. It says the mother of his child did this. There may be no divorce.
And Jeff is absolutely correct. That was, we misspoke. We made an assumption. We shouldn't have made an assumption.
Any other questions or comments? Is the applicant here? I do not see the applicant. We have a motion on the table for $1,311.33. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Robert. $1,311.33. It's a little less than 50 percent.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is the time when anyone from the public can speak about a matter that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, move on.
Regular business. We're not quite, oh, yeah, we are at nine o'clock. Okay, I'll be 10. Public hearing to consider a declaration of a public nuisance at property legally described as tract 14, Preston Place Edition, Section 27, Township 101 North, Range 48 West. This is a split rock township, Minnehaha County, South Dakota. Kevin Hookman.
Morning, Kevin.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Office. And is that showing up down here? Well, I would like to request consideration of a public nuisance declaration on the property legally described as tract 14, Preston Place Edition, 2710148, Split Rock Township. This property is generally located at the northwest corner of South Dakota Highway 42 and 48, 482nd Avenue, as you can see on the map here. On July 9th, staff was notified of tall grass and weeds on the property, and we went out there, I went out there to inspect the property and found this, and I sent a letter that afternoon. The letter was sent to the registered landowner, Courtesy Investments, to notify them of the property violation. On July 16th, the first letter was returned to the county from the mail, and a second letter was sent out as there was a small error in the type of, in the typing of the address, so I thought it was something to do with that, to return it. So a second letter was sent on July 16th, and that was also returned. Both letters were returned as not known, unable to forward. In collaboration with the State's Attorney's Office, an address was found for the registered agent of Courtesy Investments, Ken LeBry, and a third attempt to notify the property owner was made on July 23rd when the letter was sent. This letter was sent to the alternative address in Aberdeen, the new location to us, Ken LeBry. Each notification included a deadline and a contact, to either contact or abate the situation, the nuisance. And two inspections were done after the final letter was sent on August 1st and on August 5th, the weekend after that August 1st there. And the pictures here show the timestamp of the, when I have taken these pictures, and you can see that it's pretty tall, mostly weeds more than grass, and you can see it's kind of folding over the neighbor's property, so it is becoming encroaching on other people in the area. The Minnehaha County Public Nuisance Ordinance lists weeds and grass exceeding 12 inches in height in a residential subdivision as a public nuisance. South Dakota codified law notes that public nuisance may be abated by the county, and the county may defray the costs of abating the public nuisance by taxing it by special assessment against the property. Notification of this public hearing was sent to Courtesy Investments on August 6 via certified mail to both addresses, so it was sent to the registered address and the alternative address. And so the request, the Planning and Zoning Department along with the Office of the State's Attorney requests that Minnehaha County Commission declare the property legally described as tract 14, Preston Place Edition, 2710148, Split Rock Township, a public nuisance in a NAC South Dakota Law 21106. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Kevin?
That looks like thistle, is it?
No, it's not a thistle. It's kind of similar to dandelion, but very tall.
Can we go in, though, once we do this action? Can we go in and mow it?
Yes.
Or spray it?
We would be able to mow it, and I would suggest also removing the material away from the site, so it's not just lying there.
And then we just put a lien on the property?
Yep.
Commissioner Barth.
So your, your third letter, or whatever, did you get a response on it?
I have not received any response from the property owner.
Has it been two weeks, Kevin, since anybody's looked at that property?
Um.
If August 5th was the last time you were out there, it's been two weeks today.
Yes, nobody has looked out there. I drove by there in passing, let's see, it was Friday, and I wasn't out there officially, but I drove, I saw that there was still weeds out there, so.
I'll make motion.
We have a public hearing here, so is there anyone here that would like to speak about this item? Okay, seeing none. I just comment that, I know this isn't a subdivision, but it's across the street from farmland. If this was on farmland, there wouldn't be an issue with it because they could be just leaving it for grass. I'm also wondering if it could be CRP when it's that small of an area, because of a CRP, they can't mow it. So, and I also, I mean, the pictures that I'm looking at, it doesn't look like a lot of weeds. It looks like a lot of really tall grass that could be harvested for bales, for grass or cattle.
I have contacted Ralph Hammer, and he visited the site because I was wondering about the weeds, and he replied that it was mostly clover that is in the location, so it's not a noxious weed or on the noxious weed list. The, but yeah, I think that most of it is this, this white-flowered clover is how he's described it, so.
I agree with you. I think that if we called the Odies over there who have a dairy farm, they'd probably come and scoop this stuff up gratis.
I think that, and if it's on CRP, it can't be mowed, and I don't know that it is, but.
I don't think a lot like this could be.
But it is interesting, because we've never really had an opportunity of actually abating a nuisance. Are we, are we legally obligated to try to ameliorate any of the potential damages if we can pawn off the clover for some money?
I don't believe you're obligated to mitigate any damages in this case under our ordinance, but.
So if Odie's cows want to eat the clover, so be it. All right.
Interesting question.
Yeah, I'm not gonna support the motion, just because I don't think it's a problem, and it will be fall soon, and that grass is gonna fall down. Commissioner Benega.
Who filed the complaint? Was it a neighbor or was it the county review?
It was a neighbor, and when she filed the complaint or called and talked to me, it was, she was mainly concerned about things possibly living in the grass, and that the, that they want to keep their lawn nice. And I don't think it was the neighbor right next door, I think it was a little bit further down, but it was a neighbor in the neighborhood, so.
And secondly, when you sent out those certified mail requests, did you get a certification back that they received it?
I did not.
So we don't even know if they legally got the notice?
No.
I think that's a bigger issue.
Well, under our ordinance, it doesn't require that level of service. I would also note in this case, it's a private business that is supposed to be contactable under our state laws for the privilege of doing business in our state, and the fact that we can't get something through to a registered business is concerning, I guess, but.
Commissioner Kelly.
What is the zoning on this? Is it ag?
It is A1, yes. But if we go back to the map, you can see that it is very clearly a residential neighborhood in this area.
It's also on the corner right next to.
This is zoned ag, though.
Yep, yep.
I got a problem with that.
We have lots of subdivisions in the county that are zoned ag. This is probably a holdover pre-'87 when these, when we didn't have density zoning and they were created, but there are many, many subdivisions out in the county that are zoned ag. Swanson Track, Songbird Acres, they're, that are zoned ag. Hartford Heights, and it's a residential, we would classify this as a residential lot. You can see it's part of a subdivision.
Scott.
Commissioner.
Have we done this before in any of the subdivisions? Have they had this issue come up?
If you recall, we have done this type of abatement before out in West Acres. Do you remember, we had Ryan came before you. We had a property that, I can't remember the name, but had tall grass. We went through and abated it and mowed it and hit thistle. It occasionally happens where we can't get people to comply. This property may be in foreclosure or, we don't know. I mean, and so it's, we have made every attempt to contact the people who, who are the property owners with the information they provided, where their taxes go. We even went above and beyond. Sarah helped or assisted Kevin in finding an alternate address. We, I mean, we have attempted to contact these people and tell them to clean it up.
I think this is a little bit different than the one that we had before, just because there was thistles in that, and we talked to that guy back and forth all summer long, and this has just been a little over a month with, we don't know if there's been any contact.
So really, yeah, so really, we don't have many noxious weeds in there. It's mostly a field of clover?
Mostly, yeah. There is a handful.
And it's zoned A1?
Yep.
Boy, I'll tell you what, I, I'm getting less interested in this motion.
We don't have a motion yet. Commissioner Pecas.
I know.
Commissioner Kelly, do you have a comment?
Are the ta, have you researched it? Are the taxes current? And has anybody done any title search to see who owns this thing? I mean, we know who these people are, where they were came from. Maybe Bob's got.
Bob lives in the auditor's office. The taxes are current on this, and it was actually bought on tax deed in 2010 before I got it.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion to deny the nuisance.
You have a motion to deny? Is there a second? I'm gonna pass the gavel if nobody will second it.
I'll second it for conversation.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Conversation.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe it is a nuisance. I can certainly understand the neighbor worried that skunks or coons or something else are in there, and, you know, the fact that it looks pastoral doesn't mean there's not a fight to the death going on every single second where a snail is eating a plant and a shrew is eating a snail and a skunk is eating a shrew, and, so that pastoral scene is actually one of unmitigated violence. And the neighbors are correct in assuming that there could be critters in there, and sometimes critters turn into varmints, and I think we should help them out.
Commissioner Kelly.
We don't have that slide on our.
Yeah, we do. It's very early. It's early in the presentation on your iPad. I'm still not gonna support it. I think it's close to ag. It's A1 ag. I don't see it being a problem yet if there's no weeds in it.
Yeah, if I can speak to my motion, Madam Chair. This is a unique circumstance. Usually, we have one, you know, you know, Canadian thistle or one of the other noxious weeds that's delineated by statute, but here we had our Ralph Hammer, who heads up our weed department, go out there and say it's a field of clover. It's zoned A1, and unfortunately, I would love to go after, you know, fields of corn, wheat, or whatever, and declare them nuisances, but the problem is, is that this is, from what I can view, a field of clover. I don't see a lot of noxious weeds, and it's zoned A1. Unfortunately, I'm just reluctant at this point to allow us to declare a field of clover a nuisance, and that's what I see right now.
Commissioner Kelly.
Well, when you look, I think it's clearly a residential lot. It was probably bought that way in the first place. It's, I don't know how big it is, a third of an acre, half an acre maybe, but I, you know, what a law, obviously, we can do it according to the State's Attorney, we can declare it a nuisance, and I would think that we should because it's not like the field that's in back of the houses to the north or the west, and, so I'm gonna, I'm going to oppose the motion.
Any other comments? I have a motion on the table to deny the nuisance declaration. Do we recall vote?
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Pecas?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
No.
Hamburger?
Yes. Motion passes three to one to not declare this a nuisance property. So, thank you, Kevin.
Item number 11 is consider an appeal of a decision by the Minnehaha County Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit 14-04 to allow a bulk storage, bulk storage on property legally described as Lot 1, Brower's 2nd Edition, southwest quarter of Section 27, Township 102 North, Range 51 West. This was deferred from May 20th, 2014. Scott Anderson.
Okay, thank you. As you may recall, this is an item that's been before you. It was heard first on May 20th, and the applicant, it was continued at that time for 90 days to allow the applicant to address the road issues and perhaps do some investigating on what options they had, if there were any, for doing some road improvement in the Brower Edition. Just so everyone is refamiliarized with the situation, this is a conditional use permit request 14-04 to allow a bulk fuel storage facility in the Brower Edition, which is on the south side of the Hartford exit. You can see the Hartford exit at Interstate 90 right there. This shows the location of the subject property. This is a general site plan showing the bulk storage tanks and the loading facility. The public right of ways on the, on the north side of the, or on the top of the, of the facility, here's, this has been, was heard in January and it's been continued a couple times, so you're gonna see some snow, but these are the general facility, general area. You can see the road. Excuse me. This shows you some of the issues with the road. This is looking straight down to the property. This is at the intersection of the county highway and the Brower Edition subdivision road. And these are the tanks. This shows the property to the east of the, of the location. I'll be glad to, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and it was, it was appealed by an applicant. I have contacted the applicant. Robert Schulte appealed this, and I sent out a courtesy notice on August 7th reminding him of the meeting today, because it had been, you know, continued for 90 days. The Planning Commission recommended, originally recommended approval, I think, with a number of conditions, and if, they just recommended approval, no conditions, but approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Are there any questions for Scott?
Well, Madam Chair, I need to state on the record that the Creers are actually related.
Well, Madam Chair, I need to state on the record that the careers are actually related to me through my wife on my, my wife's side, but I have not been contacted. They have not contacted me and I don't see any conflict.
Any other questions for Scott? Commissioner Bennega?
Scott, would you remind us, I think we've had this conversation before about who owns that property and their own ability to address some of the road issues with taxation?
Well, Richard Brower owns, is the developer of this property. And there is a road, a road district, which is a formal arm of South Dakota government. It's an, an organized government entity. There is an established road district which provides or should provide service to this subdivision for maintaining, improving, developing roads.
Are there any other questions for Scott? I think we've talked about this issue thoroughly. Is there a motion? Oh, it isn't actually a public comment, but is there a comment from the public? This isn't actually a public hearing.
Could I?
Commissioner Kelly?
If there are none, could I ask Kirsten? Can we, we can deny this because of the access situation? Are we within our rights to do that or within the law to do that?
You certainly consider appropriate access for the level of activity on these roads. However, note that the responsibility for having this road passable and usable does lie with another, essentially another subdivision of, of government that they voluntarily formed on their own.
But as far as analyzing, you know, one of the criteria we can take into account, no matter who's responsible for it, is, is the access. Is that correct?
Yep, absolutely. If the road access is appropriate for the additional uses proposed.
One more.
Commissioner Kelly?
Have we got a motion on this thing or was the whole thing deferred?
No, we have no motion. I would remind you that we also approved another project out here.
I understand it.
We do not have a motion on the table on this.
I would make a motion to deny the, to deny the, what?
The planning permit.
The permit, yeah.
Conditional use permit.
Thank you, thank you.
You have a motion to deny the permit? Is there a second?
Seconded certainly for discussion.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Commissioner Peckus or Barth, did you have a comment?
I think it is.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I, I think we have an, we have an obligation to make sure that, you know, we, we have adequate access to a facility if, if, this is probably gonna have some increased traffic on, on, with truck traffic. I think the fact that the, some of the work has already been done, which without, you know, without the permit is somewhat of a factor. But I, I just, we need, we can't be approving things in my mind that, that don't have adequate access that are gonna create more problems. They have, they somehow have to get their problems solved together. They should have known, I mean, they, they had to do due diligence when they bought it. This situation has been there before and is gonna come up again, I'm sure. I would urge support of the motion.
Commissioner Barth?
I have to say, I have great sympathy for the applicant on this and I'd like to ask them a question in a minute. But I would point out that we just recently had a request for some stuff on Highway 115 and asked for a traffic study from the state DOT before we went any further because of the traffic on North Cliff Avenue. So the traffic certainly is an issue that's come to play in, in other, in other zoning scenarios. And I guess, Monty, could I ask you, you know, I really feel bad that we've kind of led you along this, this long. I mean, what's it been since January?
Three months.
Soon these pictures will look current again with the snow standing around there.
Actually, we, I mean, since last July is when we went to plan and zoning.
So what's going on with the roads?
To my, I'm Monty Schrader, general manager of the Hartford Elevator. My point all along is there is a road district in place there. Whether the road district is doing their job or not, I don't think that was in my consideration when we purchased the property. Now, if the road district isn't doing the job, then maybe some other property owners out there need to go to a meeting and reelect new board members for that road district. And maybe something will get done then. But, I mean, as far as denying it, I mean, the property is zoned commercial. That's what we're using it for. The traffic on, what is it, 463rd of the Wall Lake Oil? I don't think the traffic will be any more or any less than what it is right now. You got, if you delete the little corner up there, you have a coffee cup right there who has almost twice the fuel storage that what we have for theirs. So the fuel trucks going there are gonna follow the same route as they would going to ours.
So do you own the property now?
I own the property, yes.
So as a member of the road district, do you plan to urge action to improve the roads?
Yes, once, I mean, once we get this up and going, yes, I would, I mean, I would encourage more people to be involved in it out there. There's some stuff that could be done. There has been some maintenance done out there this year, which is probably the first time in five or six years that I know of. I even let one of the property owners use a box scraper of mine to improve his property or in front of his property out there just 'cause I want to be able to build out there and he understands that. And he had some issues with his road in front of his property and I let him use my tractor and box scraper to go out there and try to fix it.
Are there any other comments?
May I just ask, may I ask a question actually? I thought before we delayed this three months the last time that there was some talk of there's some ongoing litigation to resolve some of these road district questions. Do you know if there's been any progress in that area?
I know there, I think there, what the litigation is, is between the first addition and the second addition. One has a road association, one has a road district. And I don't know if they're trying to combine them all into one or one is fighting the other one or what, I don't know. But as far as I know, there's been no action from a judge at that point in time. I know the judge has heard the, but I have not heard that he has give his ruling yet.
Okay. If I may, just one more thing. Not a question, but I just would, would like to remind the commission, however, when they do look at a certain proposal or a certain permit that's being brought before you, I would ask you to take a look at what you've done in the past for the same or similar uses too. And that must inform your decision to avoid being arbitrary with any decision that you're making on a particular use. The more similar a prior approved uses, that opens up some questions of arbitrariness. But let that guide you, so.
This is zoned commercial and there is a road district in place. And we have a motion on the table to approve. Are there any other questions?
The motion is to deny.
The motion is to deny the approval?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. The motion is to deny the permit. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Barth has one more question.
I, I'm just gonna say, I, I've seconded the motion for discussion. And I think that, you know, preventing these folks from doing business for this long is really not very good for Minnehaha County, not very good for, you know, people that want to do business here. At the same time, I am pretty darn concerned, if not ticked off, about the condition of that road out there. And the fact that it's been litigated and argued about for so long shows that the legal system may not be functioning at its best here, even if, if, if we're demanding action from other groups. So I, I think at this point, we should okay things, but I'm still not happy about it.
Okay, any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, just one comment. I mean, I, other, all other things equally, you know, this thing is probably, there's no question and it's simply an access problem. I didn't agree with the rezoning of the other. And I, I, this problem has been, I don't know how many years this has been coming up to us again. A lot, a lot. And, you know, with no resolution, the property owner, the development owner doesn't seem to care. And that was the purpose of my motion. It's nothing personal against the elevator and, or the fuel storage, I'm sorry. And, and I, you know, if, if the roads would get repaired or if there'd be some assurance that that's gonna be done in the next 12 months, I would have a different opinion on this.
Okay, Commissioner Bennega?
The only thing I would suggest, and I don't know that this is accurate, but I think that because of the, this is economic development. We have approved projects similar to this in the past. Frankly, the access issue is a minor issue and this might in fact move the process along a little quicker. I guess I'm disappointed more in the fact that the road district hasn't taken the bull by the horns and solved their own problem, regardless of how you feel about those issues. I think that the people who want to develop this have the right to do that and I'm gonna support it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second on the table to deny the conditional use permit with a roll call vote. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Peckus?
No.
Bennega?
No.
Barth?
No.
Hamburger?
No. Motion fails four to one.
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I have a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
One comment.
Commissioner Barth?
Don't ever complain about the roads, Monty.
I have a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. Want a roll call vote? Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hamburger?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one. All those in favor, well, I guess we're done. I'm gonna make you vote again.
Item number 12 is a briefing and presentation from the Compass Center guiding renewal and recovery from sexual and domestic violence. Patty Brooks.
today and just provide you with an informational update.
Identify yourself, just identify yourself again, Patty.
Definitely. Patty Brooks, executive director of the Compass Center, along with two of my board members are also here with me today, Kurt Barst and Jennifer Sherman. Again, just an informational update on what we've been doing, some of the new things that are happening at the Compass Center. I did provide you with a presentation that you have. Obviously, our mission statement of breaking the cycle to end domestic and sexual violence in our community. A list of our programs and services, looks like it's off here a little bit on the slide. I'm not gonna go through that entire list. We continue to provide free one-on-one counseling, advocacy, play therapy for our youngest victims. We work at Child's Voice, transitional housing, protection order, safety planning. Again, I don't need to belittle the points that I've made before you in the past, but all the programs and services that the Compass Center is able to offer to victims and offenders in our community. What I'd really like to spend a few minutes on is talking more about the new services that we've started adding and providing in Minnehaha and Lincoln County since the last time I was here before you. The Prison Rape Elimination Act has, has been an act on the books for 15, 14, 15 years. There were some new federal mandates that were, came down from the federal government in June of 2012. What that it required is institutions and residential facilities that house individuals are required to offer free confidential third-party counseling and advocacy to victims of sexual assault. We then are the experts in the community working with victims of sexual assault and we do have in place a 24/7 response team for sexual assaults within, within the community. So we've entered into memorandums of understanding and I list them out there for you. Currently, we're working with the South Dakota Department of Corrections, the Juvenile Detention Center in here in Minnehaha County, McCrossan's Boys Ranch, Lutheran Social Services, and Volunteers of America Dakotas. We're also working with the Glory House and possibly the jail and others who are required to meet some of these mandates and requirements. What that really means is the staff that we've had all along are adding these other facilities to locations that we will go out and respond to when somebody says they've been sexually assaulted. And it doesn't have to be a requirement that someone is sexually insulted while they're in the residential facility or while they're incarcerated. It can be from a past history and they're just coming out with that sexual assault and reporting that for the first time. So we as advocates will be with that victim while they're in that residential or incarcerated facility and then we can work with them as their advocate throughout the entire process. So that is something that we have added to our list of services here in probably the last, little bit over a year, a little bit over a year we've been doing that. You may have heard a lot of, on the news lately about human trafficking. I know we had a large conference with the U.S. Attorney's Office here in Sioux Falls last week. Human trafficking is a huge issue and it is growing. And that is another population that we have started to work with at the Compass Center. We provide services just as we do any, any other victim. We can provide free counseling, advocacy, transitional housing, emergency services, transportation, whatever we can do, just like any other victim that we have helped in, in the past. So this is a new dynamic, a new characteristic that our staff are learning to be experts on because it is a different population that we haven't worked with in the past. And so we have seen about a half a dozen victims so far that we have worked with in this area who've come to the Compass Center to receive our free services because they are a victim of human trafficking. And we also participate in all of those statewide task forces and subcommittees, again, because we want to become experts in working with these victims. On the other side, working with offenders of domestic violence, we see this as probably one of our areas that's gonna grow the most. And we have seen growth over the fiscal year 2013 into fiscal year 2014. Last year in fiscal year 13, we provided services to 225 offenders of domestic violence. This fiscal year 14 that just ended June 30th, we served 255 offenders of domestic violence. And we continue to see that growth in that program. Most of our referrals come from the courts, DSS, probation, parole, and a small percentage are voluntary. We do an assessment orientation. They're with us for six months upon successful completion, then we communicate that back with the referring agency. What's gonna continue to see or help these numbers grow that we will see? We started alternative sentencing in Minnehaha County and Lincoln County is also starting to look at that. What that allows an offender to do is if they're willing to plead guilty upfront, they are automatically referred to the Compass Center upon successful completion of our six-month programming. That charge of domestic violence does not go on their record. It is screened by the Minnehaha County State's Attorney and Randy Sample is kind of in charge of looking at those cases. We've had four individuals who've been referred to the Compass Center and have completed the alternative sentencing program. Because that's a new opportunity for individuals where it wouldn't affect their employment, they don't lose their weapons, et cetera, et cetera, we are possibly gonna see growth in that area, more individuals taking advantage of alternative sentencing in Minnehaha County. Another factor that we believe that we'll see an increase in individuals that we serve is new domestic violence legislation that went on the books July 1. There was a domestic violence summer study that we participated in with the legislature last year and they passed five out of their six proposed bills. One of the, the bills that changed the definition of domestic violence. So we think we will see more individuals being referred to the Compass Center based on that change in definition, which now includes a significant romantic relationship, which is defined in statute, which will also include teenagers and their referrals to our teen violence program because it does include teen relationships. And so that will be another area that we possibly will see an increase in services. The last area that I just want to point out again with our, working with offenders of domestic violence was a Supreme Court, state Supreme Court decision that happened in February, South Dakota versus Alka, where the state's attorney would not have discretion to decide whether or not to affix the tag of domestic violence on a simple assault or an aggravated assault. And so with the opinion of the Attorney General, we're looking at our statutes and saying, if that tag is no longer discretionary in plea bargaining, that tag will stay on those crimes and then those will be automatic referrals to the Compass Center as well, once they have, they either plead guilty or are convicted of domestic violence in our court system. So I just wanted to kind of update on where we're at, some of the new things that we're working on with the laws and, and with the state Supreme Court decision and what we think will, will be happening. will be happening with our agency and the increasing number of services that we provide. I've also listed out our current board members and our current staff members, just so you're up to date on where we're at as far as our leadership at the Compass Center. I certainly can be available for any questions that you may have, and also if either one of my board members would like to add a few comments, I will step aside for that as well.
Any questions for Patty?
I have some, but we can maybe wait until...
My name's Kurt Brost, and I'm the President of the Board at the Compass Center right now. We've met with a number of you individually along the way, and I know you're familiar with what we do. We also want you to know that we're familiar with what you do and the challenges that you guys have right now as a county commission with budgeting and everything else that's going on. Unfortunately, some of those same things tend to trickle down our way in regards to the problems that you have in regards to funding. We're getting more, as you can see, and we've, in some cases, been asked to do with less, not by you. And that's why I wanted, we wanted to make sure we understand that we thank you. We appreciate your understanding. And I think everybody gets that the more we get out in front of the issues that we deal with, the better off we are as a county, as a community, and the more likely we are to hopefully save resources in the long run by being in front of these things. And so your increased funding, increased efforts, and increased support are greatly appreciated. And as the President of the Board, we have asked Patty, and also as board members, we want to make sure that we are communicating to you what we see as changes, both in volumes and in programming, so you understand before we come to you and just ask for dollars, that you have a breadth of understanding of what it is we do and what it is that, you know, the community is continually being faced with, and some of the changes that are, some are fortunate and some are unfortunate, that we see as an organization and that are obviously going to affect what you do as a body. So just wanted to say thank you, and please know that we're here as a board, and also Patty is our director, with any, if you ever have any questions or have a desire to see or, you know, review what we do. So, thank you.
Questions, Commissioner Barth, or comments?
I guess I would ask either of you, as the state has broadened their expectations for you to act, they've actually cut your funding at the same time, isn't that right?
That is correct. For the third straight year in a row, the state of South Dakota has cut the funding, grant funding to the Compass Center.
And so in total, their funding has been cut, what, $100,000?
$90,000 the first year, $40,000 last year, and $6,600 the current year.
So $150,000, basically, has been cut, even as they broaden your responsibilities. Sounds like county government to me.
And that was the point with my saying there are similarities, right?
Well, if I might, though, with people that are on probation and parole, do you have a lot of interaction with them that are, again, violating laws on those, on these types of issues?
We do get a handful of referrals to the Family Violence Project from probation and parole, but it's a very small percentage. It's probably our smallest percentage of referrals that we get. But if they are working with court services, they oftentimes are referred to our agency for our programming.
And domestic violence is often a result of alcohol and drug abuse, isn't it?
I wouldn't necessarily say the result of. I would say that alcohol adds fuel to the fire. I think the domestic violence is something that's inherent with individuals. They believe it to be morally or ethically okay to have power and control over their intimate partner, and then alcohol just adds fuel to that fire and just makes that situation twice as bad.
Commissioner Kelly?
Patty, you've told us about the success of your program in the past. What, do you have any numbers on what kind of results you've gotten since your program's fairly new, isn't it?
The Family Violence Project?
Yeah, well, the one where the perpetrator goes through the training, or through the classes and stuff.
The Family Violence Project's been around for 15, 20 years, a very long time. Our recidivism rate, as far as the number of referrals for individuals ever coming back to our program, stays less than 2%. But the difficulty with that is, and I openly say this, is we can complete education with these offenders for six months, send them back in the community, they could be with the same partner or a different partner, or they could leave the state. And if that partner, current or new, or are leaving the state, we may not know if they're committing new acts of domestic violence within our community, because domestic violence is the most under-reported crime in the United States. So we hope we're successful, but for us to stand here and say with 100% surety that we are successful 98% of the time, that's just an unknown because of what they're doing behind closed doors. We just can't, we can't know all of that.
Question would be, though, if, you only get involved if the court orders to your program, is that correct?
About 95, 92% are court-ordered. Some come through the Department of Social Services, especially if child protective services is involved. We get a percentage of those, a very small percentage of probation, parole, and a very fewer voluntary that come to us.
But if somebody has gone through your program, goes out and commits another domestic abuse, and this time they just go through the regular process, go to jail, and you don't have those numbers, you don't?
We don't have those numbers, no. Not unless they're referred back to us.
Do you look at it all to see, oh, we lost a few there?
No, we have not looked into that. I don't, I don't know how difficult that would be to track. We just know the ones that are referred back to us are the ones that we're able to keep.
So after the six months, there is no follow-up?
Correct. We do have an aftercare program, but right now it's voluntary, that's not court-ordered or mandated. So we do offer aftercare for individuals on Monday evenings, but again, we have maybe three participants who partake in that currently, so it's not used highly.
Commissioner Pecas?
Patty, let me get this straight. We've got the state no longer allowing, through state statute, the state's attorneys to be able to bargain, plea bargain, away whether or not this is a domestic violence case. So that's off the table. So now they're going to be marked as domestic violence. And then we have as part of their solution for keeping people out of the prison system to go through your domestic violence project. So you're an integral partner with the state to try to keep people out of the system. And yet, we turn around and the same state, which has a budget surplus, goes and cuts your funding. Correct?
Absolutely correct.
It's his county government.
And in all actuality, the only money we get from the state of South Dakota is for victim services. We get absolutely zero dollars to support the offender programming.
And I just want to go on the record again, that the amazing thing of the Domestic Violence Project is that you guys have been able to have that low recidivism rate. And I know people move out of the state, but the reality is that those numbers are amazing. And so it's really hard for me to understand the logic of cutting your funding and giving you more weight to put on your shoulders. You truly are Atlas, because you're carrying a lot of weight here, and we understand and we commiserate with your position.
Thank you.
Commissioner Barth and I had met with Patty and talked about this issue, and I actually have a letter in my portfolio that was sent to the state asking for funding, and the state said, no, go back and ask the county, who has no reserves and is struggling with their budget. We're supposed to help fund you, even though it's a federal mandate, they've changed the laws in the state of South Dakota. We're the ones that's supposed to continue, and we do continue to fund you guys. And I'd also have to say Lincoln County has stepped up and increased their funding in the last two years significantly, and we greatly appreciate what you do, and we do what we can to try to continue to support you, and we will continue to support you in the state effort in saying they need to step up and help you also.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I truly appreciate that.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Board, for coming.
Item 13, consider a motion to declare two salt spreaders, asset number 70960 and 70970 as surplus property for purposes of salvage disposal and sale as scrap iron to TJN Enterprises, and to declare accumulated scrap iron pile as surplus for the purpose of sale of recycling to TJN Enterprises. TJ, Shannon Schultz?
Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. The item before you was a request to basically authorize us to get rid of some scrap iron, I believe, near our unit packets. TJ provided kind of a picture of our yard with some bins. There's some aluminum signs, some steel blades from the plowing, some miscellaneous scrap, including refrigerators that we could pick up from our rides away, and also sort of dilapidated truck body. By approving this as a request, we will basically be allowed to recycle these products. TJN Enterprises comes and picks them up, weighs them, pays us the going rate for said materials, and I guess, if approved, the question would be if it goes to the general fund or the highway fund, so.
Is there any questions or a motion? I have, I have one question before, since nobody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the declaration of those spreaders as surplus property.
I have a motion and a second, and I do have a question. Do TJN Enterprises sort, or do they just take as bulk and give you the cheapest price for the cheapest amount of metal that's in there? I know there's two different ways of doing it, and so I'm just curious how they do it.
I haven't been to the plant to see that actually happen, but I do know that aluminum cans go to the aluminum can area, and the bulk aluminum goes to the aluminum area. Those are high carbide steel blades. I don't know if there's a different rate of reimbursement of that over just regular iron. I'm sorry, if you want me to follow up on that, I can certainly...
I just think, just for your own departments, it might be interesting. I sell scrap metal through my own business, and we have someone that come in, I don't know who it is, picks it up, sorts it separately, and you do get different prices for different things. So, and maybe these people do that, I have no idea who we do it with.
Well, we have sorted it, as you can see, a little bit there, and I assume that they will do some further sorting based on the quality of grades of steel, iron content, but I don't know for sure.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Item 14, consider a resolution to compromise and discharge in full with no payment. Certain annual liens deemed as uncollectible by Minnehaha County Human Resources in the amount of $657,327.30. Bob Litz?
Good morning, folks. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And as you recall, earlier this year, we did go through the first four steps of the annual lien cleanup, and that was because the book arrived a little bit earlier this year, and they weren't quite done with five. We decided to go ahead with the first four. Step five are the liens identified as uncollectible due to DCs, transient, social security income, homeless, and no resources, and we would normally reduce those to zero. Request that you approve the attached resolution, which will cancel the liens that have been identified in the uncollectible category number five. If you wish to see a detailed list, I do have that with me, and I'd be more than willing to share that information. Attached chart shows the history of our annual lien cleanups and the increasing balance of liens owned to the county. And in anticipation, Mr. Barth's questions here. The number of liens since, number, or number of compromised liens, the amount since 1991, when we're doing the system that we do now, is over $23 million. The amount, a total amount of outstanding liens owed the county as of August is $62,689,010. So I request that today you sign the resolution on final action for the lien cleanup.
Are there any questions for Auditor Litz? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to authorize you to sign this resolution, Madam Chair.
Motion and a second to sign the resolution for compromise and discharge with no payment in full. And again, I think it is incredibly sad, the amount of money that is not collected, and we're the charity recipient, not recipient payer. Thank goodness we can help people. Commissioner Pecas?
The people of Minnehaha County have very broad shoulders, and I think this is just evidence of it, just to see the number of liens and the ability that Minnehaha County has stepped forward to, as Hugh Grogan used to say, help the poorest of the poor. And that's what we've done here.
Commissioner Barth?
I didn't realize I was so predictable that I might have a question. I, I would say this is great, Bob, the numbers that you gave us. I've not seen these other ones, which breaks down the liens as far as food, rent, hospital, dental, you know, court-appointed attorneys. I don't think I've seen those numbers in the eight years I've been here, and I thank you for that.
Very good, very good. I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Bob.
Item 15 is consider a motion to declare two high-speed central ballot scanners, asset 75000 and 74080, as surplus for purpose of trade-in to ESNS with a trade-in value of $7,500 each. Bob Litz?
Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office again. The Auditor's Office is preparing a surplus for trade, two high-speed central colors. These are our old 650s that are, we're going to trade in on our 850s. These machines are used to tabulate ballots on election night. The two machines being traded are model number 4205-7327 and model number 4205-7324. Machines will be traded to ESNS, who's providing the new machines with a value of $75,000, or $7,500 apiece. The action required of the commission is to declare a surplus for trade, two high-speed central colors, tag number 7500 and 74080, with a trade-in value of $7,500.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Item number 16 is to authorize the Chairman to sign work release inmate housing agreement with the South Dakota Department of Corrections in Minnehaha County. Warden Jeff Gromer.
Good morning, Jeff Gromer. Warden at the jail. I'm just here to request that we renew the contract with the Department of Corrections for the housing of inmates at the Corrections Center.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions about the contract? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Because the warden and I, I wonder if I could keep him up here for a minute. I spent most of yesterday confined with the warden in the backseat of a car as we went up here.
You were in the cage?
We were both confined.
In any case, I think this would be a good moment for a brief report on our trip yesterday, which we met with a committee from the Department of Corrections, right, is how we would describe that.
I think so, it was adjourned for the Department of Corrections, and then the Secretary came in.
Well, immediately upon our arrival, they were ready to adjourn. It totally was a pro forma meeting where statute or their rules required them to hold a public meeting. They had no anticipation of any public input, and were quick to see our backs after they allowed us a few moments to speak. And now I'm going to make just a political shot here, but it reminded me of the EB5 visa investigation that we've had. I mean, let's just shut the door. They had no much interest in our discussion. At the same time, I became more informed about, about issues from, from this trip. And interestingly, the, the whole discussion was about the number of people that we have on probation in the county. But truly, the, the issue should be the number of people that, who are on probation that wind up back in jail. And clearly, if you're on parole probation and you're doing your job and staying out of trouble, it's, it's not the worst thing. But if you're not staying out of trouble, and I think there's certainly reason to believe that monitoring of these people is incomplete. Talking to a DCI agent, I know he said when they, when they find someone on probation or parole that's committed a crime, and asks their parole officer where they are, they have no idea, because they've not talked to them in three months. And this kind of issue was, of course, of little interest to them, but I wonder if maybe Ken or the warden would like to expand upon my minor critique here.
Warden Gromer, do you have any comments?
Well, obviously, when someone's on probation, they don't have any effect on the jail until they come back to jail, whether that's through another separate criminal charge or through a violation of the conditions of probation. Those, those people are the ones that have an effect on the jail. Clearly, someone being on probation as opposed to going to jail in the penitentiary reduces, reduces the numbers that we're going to house. It's just as the, it's the violations that come back to jail that have an impact on our jail population. That's the, that's the concern for me, I guess, specifically with probation. Successful candidates on probation is a good deal for everybody. Unsuccessful candidates on probation does have an impact on the, on the numbers of people in jail.
Commissioner?
For purpose of clarity, for the record, so the people reading this, if it's actually reported on, for people that are watching it, there is a big distinction between people that are on parole. Those are people that have been pre-released from the Department of Corrections, out of the executive branch of government, and they still have oversight from the executive branch. But when you're talking about probation, probation is somebody that's actually been sentenced, and they're on probation, but technically, if they're on probation, they're still under oversight by the third branch of government, the judicial branch of government. There's a big distinction. DOC, the Department of Correction, and to the executive branch, they have a ton of tools and a ton of resources to help with that process. When you're talking about the judicial branch of government trying to oversight probationers, we need to understand that there aren't a lot of tools in place in the toolbox to help facilitate that. Is that kind of what you're talking about, Warden?
Correct.
Okay.
You're absolutely correct on the distinction between parole and probation.
You're absolutely correct on the distinction between parole and probation. That's one of the probation officers trying to enforce the rules of probation don't have a lot of tools they can use. That's a very good way of explaining it. Typical sanctions for a violation of probation can be a stay in jail. I don't, I'm obviously not a probation officer. I don't know what other tools they have available to them. I do know that they, those folks can come back into jail for an undetermined amount of time, whether it's a short stint to get the message across on the probation violation or whether a motion's filed to revoke their suspended sentence, which then requires a far longer stay as their case then moves through the judicial system again.
Some of those people on probation, I'm assuming those are coming from the state penitentiary, not just out of our jail? No, just out of our jail?
Well, that's where the two separate issues between parole and probation get confused. What, to make it easier to understand, and the way it's looked at from our perspective is if a person's on parole, that person's coming out of the penitentiary. They've been released from the penitentiary on these various conditions, and those are the conditions of parole. Someone that's on probation has not gone to the penitentiary for the offense they're on probation for. It's, that's done either in lieu of a penitentiary sentence or a jail sentence. So they'll be sentenced, and this is just an example, two years in the state penitentiary suspended on the conditions of all these probationary conditions. Where parole, they get the two-year sentence in the penitentiary and they're released after a year on all of these conditions. And the numbers are just obviously arbitrary and made up. But it's, they're two separate, different entities. It's not this, they get talked together about together a lot, this probation parole, but the terms are not interchangeable. They mean distinctly different things.
Mr. Chair.
Barth.
You know, it's actually, our discussion is about money, because the state is saying we don't have enough people on probation, and so they're not going to give us any money. Meanwhile, we tell them we've got this many people on probation, and they say, no, no, you're wrong. You have this many on probation. And Ken, I wonder if you could expand on that?
Assume the position, Mr. Colonel.
And, you know, the other part of that is, you know, they're making it up.
Now, again, this was a rules hearing specifically on how the reimbursement back to counties is going to work under Senate Bill 70. So, I mean, obviously, we have some great interest in that topic, and we thought it would behoove us to go to that hearing and to present some of the concerns that we have regarding that process. Again, I think I could characterize it with what Commissioner Barth said, that, you know, they were a little surprised if people showed up for the hearing and that, and we were given an opportunity to speak. The things that we concentrated on, and that in our presentation, was, number one, is that there has to be better communication in the process to review these numbers in order to ensure that they are correct and that. I mean, this is too important of a process and too important of an impact not to be sure that the numbers that they're basing these decisions on aren't the right ones. And so we urge them, as part of the administrative rule process, to provide some sort of communication and review with counties prior to the adoption that this is the number, because we do have differences and some concerns about what number they're using. For instance, the last number, and I think it was as of the end of, or the first of July of this year, showed that we had 1,248 probationers. However, the numbers that we've received from our own folks here at the UJS indicate that number was 1,401. Now, clearly not enough to meet the threshold, perhaps, of the, that they're saying for reimbursement, but it was a lot closer than the 1,284. Now, again, I'm not saying that the number they're using is wrong, but I'm saying that we have two different numbers that we've been looking at, and so that just illustrates the need to have a review process whereby we're part of that review to verify what is the right number. And so we urge that, you know, that review process to happen. And we also urge that, you know, they need, as we've reiterated time and time again with Senate Bill 70, that they have got to communicate to the people here that pay the bills for this thing and that. And that hasn't been done, that, you know, that the first many of us found out about what number they were going to use was by the contact from a local reporter who had the numbers way before we did. And so that's an issue, and that's a problem that needs to be resolved, and we reiterated that during our portion of the hearing. So I think the hearing lasted a grand total of 17 minutes, and that we were able to have an additional 10 minutes after the recordings were stopped in order to flesh out some more of our concerns. And that's when we pointed out, you know, the fact that, look, it's the people that you violate that impact us. And so during the same time period where we're showing that we had a reduction in the number of probationers from 1,284 to 1,248, whatever, Warden Gromer's own numbers show that we had an increase in the number of people who violated during that same time period of almost 95 people who violated more this time around than they did last year. That's where the impact to us is, is when people violate and they are actually thrown in our jail. The number who is actually on probation, I'm not sure that that makes a real, real big difference. I mean, it's who violates, and that's where we see an increase.
Commissioner Pecus.
Well, I'm just, every time I hear you guys talk with negotiations with the state on what the number is, I get the sense that we're trying to sell a used car, because the number's in there somewhere, it's somewhere in the middle. And I just wish we could, you know, remember Reynolds, right? Trust, but verify? Let's get the right number.
And, you know, they did encourage us. We have the opportunity, which I think we'll take advantage of, is to write a letter to the rules hearing committee about, here are our concerns, here are our observations, and here are concerns about the numbers and our recommendations, and we will be taking advantage of that and crafting such a letter for your review prior to it going out.
Commissioner Kelly, did you have a comment?
First, I want to thank John for clearing up this, because I've never really clearly understood this probation parole deal. Does, Ken, don't go. Does Senate Bill 70 address both probationers and parolees? And, and maybe Jeff will answer this, but a violation by either one of them, does a probation violation take them directly to the penitentiary or does it take it through our facility in the same way with parolees?
No. Again, it goes back to the, and Commissioner Pecus can probably explain this better than I can. A parolee can go right back to the penitentiary through an administrative process. They do not have to go back into court in front of a judge. A probationer cannot go to the penitentiary unless the conditions of their suspended sentence has been violated and the judge determines that they want to impose that suspended time. So it's the motion to revoke the suspended sentence, which is filed by the state's attorney's office, which then gets the case back on the court docket and moving through the court system. Parole's a separate entity. That's an administrative hearing through the Department of Corrections process.
Do the parolee, you say it goes right back to jail, they take them right up to the pen? They do not, they do not, are they held in your facility at all?
Yes. They can be. They can be held in jail, they can be held in jail and then released back to, back on parole, they can be held in jail and taken back up to the penitentiary, or they can go directly back up to the penitentiary. It just, that kind of depends upon the circumstances and what's taking place.
So we incur a cost on either one of them?
We can't.
But the $1,000 per person was addressed to the probationers, is that correct?
Yes. That, Ken can probably answer that better. My understanding is that number's figured off, the total number of probationers, not the number of violations.
And it's basing, that is based on a trend line that's developed by the DOC, and that sets kind of the threshold for reimbursement. And for us, I believe, they've said that number is 1,412, and obviously, we didn't reach it with the 1,248 that they originally said we had, and nor would we reach it at 1,401 is the number that we set. But again, I mean, our point is, is that that's really not a relevant number. I mean, it's who violates and what's the increase in violations that put people into our system in that hand. We've had some increases in that area according to the numbers and the counts that have been done by the warden.
Why does this sound like the Affordable Care Act?
Commissioner Bennigan.
My understanding is, in all the times we've discussed this in the Criminal Justice Advisory Board issue, is if we don't reach 10% growth, we don't get any money anyway. Period. That's my view. So if you don't have, doesn't make any difference. The 10% says that if we don't make a 10% increase in the number of probationers, we will not see any revenue. And after yesterday's discussion, which we were the only one who showed up, it appears that nobody's going to see a whole bunch of money in this conversation, except maybe a select number of individual counties.
Well, it'll probably be some of the smaller counties that can have some, you know, some numbers that don't have jails that are sending them to other locations.
Go from 10 to 13.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could just, we could just send some people out that we know that are coming right back in, do them all in one day.
I will say, however, the trip was very enjoyable with the company we had, we had a great lunch at the Hardee's in Pier, and, you know, and anytime we want to take another road trip for lunch, I'd be happy to do it with the same company.
Was there even an agenda for this meeting?
I didn't see a present.
There was no agenda for the meeting? Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your additional.
Ready to move on?
Yep, we're ready to move on.
Okay. Item 17 is to authorize the Chairman and the Director of Emergency Management to sign the state and local agreement between Minnehaha County and the state of South Dakota for county emergency management. Lynda Young.
Commissioners Lynda Young, Emergency Management, Minnehaha County. Thankfully, I was not confined with Commissioner Barth. Moving along. In front of you, you have the state and local agreement. This is an annual agreement with the state of South Dakota. It provides up to 50% reimbursement for the administrative and other programs that I have in my office. Within your memo, like I said, you have the grant is very similar to previous years, and we won't actually have an amount until the federal government awards the state, and then, just like you did a couple weeks ago, you'll sign an addendum once we actually get that amount. But in FY 214, our amount was 227,36022, which is more than enough to cover the 50% of salary and administrative expenses we have in our office. So I'd be willing to answer any questions, but at the end of our discussion, I need the Commissioner to authorize the chairperson, auditor, and myself to enter into the agreement with the state of South Dakota.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Discussion, questions for Lynn? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Lynn.
Counture.
Commissioner Kelly.
Did we vote on the agreement with the DOC?
Yes, we did that first, and then Commissioner Barth asked if we could have a discussion.
Oh, then, okay.
We did.
Item 18 is to authorize the Chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding between City of Sioux Falls and Minnehaha County Residential Detox Center, Carol Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller, Minnehaha County Human Services. Before you today is a request for an MOU or a memorandum of understanding, understanding between the City of Sioux Falls, specifically the Health Department. They have a review coming up in two weeks from HERSA, and part of what they need to have as part of that is a memorandum of understanding that there is a place in town that takes patients who qualify for detox. So that just spells it out, but we do accept. Any questions at all?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the City of Sioux Falls for detox. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Item 19 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly.
The SDACC Resolutions Committee met.
Friday.
Friday. I think my week. We had six proposals we took up there. There were probably, and I, sorry, I haven't got the, you haven't gotten from Wilcox the results of the others?
Not yet.
Okay. But on the six we brought up, the proposal we took in last year on a 3% greater lesser, that one passed through with a 4% cap, so that'll be voted on by the membership at the convention.
The 4% cap?
There wasn't a whole lot of discussion on it. That was just kind of bring it back again and see what we can get done and make up for what any mistakes we made. The second one was a 10% increase on sales tax on alcoholic beverages, and that, together with the one that split, or took the different distributor, it took part of the state's money, received a lot of discussion. Interesting, it's the same old thing, the smaller counties, in fact, one of the smallest, was the most vocal about the fact they didn't get any money and they still had a lot of crime. And it took some negotiations to get approval, but I guess I felt that it was in our best interests. Interestingly, at the end of the thing, the chairman was Mike Ortoner from Custer, no, Fall River, Fall River. And he, and they're not a very large county, and he really kind of scolded the smaller counties for continuing to be, you know, to be opposed to the big county distributions and everything else. He said, you know, this is a statewide association, and really came to our defense on it, which I thought was very good. I appreciated it. We did pass that, the 10% increase onto the membership. There's no question that even if it passes the membership, it will be a tough uphill battle. My indications from second floor are that transportation is going to be the biggest, roads are going to be the biggest issue this year, that there's a concern of everybody on. But nonetheless, if we work on this thing, I think we can start making some inroads. You never know what will happen in legislature, you know, maybe they'll see the light on this thing and say, hey, this isn't bad. But anyway, I was really happy that it's going to go on to the general membership for discussion on the floor. And we had to put a cap, you know, the distribution formula, and I don't think, just, I'm the only one that saw that, wasn't I? Or did you send that out to the commission?
The commission.
Okay, and you saw, you know, they had, Ken had done a spreadsheet on what each county would get under the 10%. It's about a $12 million, almost $12 million money, all that money will go to the counties. So we had to put a base on it so that the smaller, you know, just the smaller counties would get a minimum of, and I think we were talking $50,000, which some of the small counties is significant, really significant. But again, they, you know, they have a lot of territory and very little people to handle it, so I think it's fair that that happened. It'll mean, in the numbers that you saw, probably about an 8% reduction to the big counties, but I think we can live with that if we can get this tax in. One of the things that Dusty, Dusty Johnson and I had a meeting, and one of the things he brought up would be, would you guys consider, what do you call it, a lowering of the mill levy to cover, you know, so it's not a tax increase? And, you know, I guess we can talk about anything.
Already at the lowest.
But that's some of the discussion that will come up, I'm sure. Then also, the cost of defense, prosecution and defense in the institutions passed on, and the tax financing proposal passed on to the general membership. So I'm going to encourage everybody to go up there because we're going to have to fight hard with the membership also to get these through, but this is, and I don't necessarily know that the board comes out with a recommendation as so much as these are the ones we've approved for the discussion, so hopefully, we'll get somewhere with it this year.
Commissioner Kelly, I'm wondering what the discussion was on the redistribution of sales tax?
That and the, and the, and the cut of the split of the state monies, I guess, they didn't want to touch the redistribution. They didn't want to touch going into their cities and splitting, getting their money. I think they felt, one, it was a battle that would really, really be fought uphill, but two, they, I don't know, I guess it just wasn't at this point possible. Would it be in the future? Perhaps. But anytime you're going after somebody's money, there's a lot of people out there that will fight you.
It's interesting that they're all willing to hold on to their own money, but they're not concerned about the taxpayers' money, because there is enough taxes paid in the state of South Dakota to go around, but there are certain entities that- But there are certain entities that have war chests, extra money, and they aren't interested in helping those who do not have. People of South, I think if you sold this to the taxpayers of South Dakota, it would pass.
So take out petitions? That might be a good idea.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Bar.
I agree with you on that, but I would like to commend Commissioner Kelly for getting these many things through there. That's really a strong step forward, and I hope we can continue to make that happen.
It helps to have someone at the table. Robert and I were discussing, and when he went up last year, I think, for our proposals, as a member of the committee, you can continue in the conversation. As Robert went up, you're kind of heard and then sit down. So I think it's important. I think if we're going to get something out of SDACC, we need to be part of it. And sometimes I know that's a difficult thing, and it's, you know, travel and everything else. But that's, that's a way we're going to make some headway there, is to have people at the table on these various committees. Resolutions, of course, was a big one. And, you know, I got that because I was the only one to volunteer it. But that's okay. We're there now. We haven't had any of them resolutions for long.
Thank you for taking the trip to Pierre. Any other liaison reports? I have one. I went this morning to the Sioux Falls Forward Investors Breakfast, Forward Sioux Falls Investors Breakfast this morning, and they were just talking about the proposed building project that would go out at the university center with laboratory buildings and stuff. It was very, very interesting. They have some great plans. I think there was a lot of excitement in the room of what they've got, looking to go forward with, lots of development. So it was very interesting. There's there, oh, and I have one more. I had gotten an email from Ravalli, Montana, as a county, from a committee member there that they're looking at their county government as far as how many commissioners do you have seated at the board? Right now, that county has five commissioners, but everyone else, according to this person in the email, said they only have three commissioners in the state of Montana. And they're reviewing whether they thought it was important to have three or five, and what did we have, and what was our, how do we run our government here? And so I emailed him back and put in a few other interesting facts, such as, I said, we make $26,000 pre-tax, and we work, I mean, you could easily work 30, 40 hours a week at this job if you want to and you have the time. And I just put in a few other things that we do, and got a response back from him. He thought it was extremely interesting that we only get $26,000 a year because they're paid $50,000 a year. We have 176,000 people in our county. They have 40,000 people in their county. When I looked at their website, they meet daily, and they are district. And I thought, man, I can't imagine daily, although I think a lot of us have meetings daily. If we had to come daily to conduct county business to this meeting room, it would make our lives a whole lot more different.
Ken would go nuts.
Pardon me?
Ken would go nuts.
Yeah, he would be really tired of us. But it was a very interesting conversation, and they were thinking about going three, and I told them it wouldn't work for us to be three. We just, we couldn't conduct county business with three. So it was an interesting conversation.
I love you all very much, but with the exception of my wife and kids, I don't want to see any of you guys daily.
Okay, is there any new business? Ken has some new business for us.
Misses, as you know, you're scheduled to conduct a public hearing on the budget on the first Tuesday of September. And as you know, there's a couple of outstanding issues that you brought to our attention that you would like to resolve prior to the adoption of the final budget, which is September 30. And so what I'm asking of you is to help identify one other session, and I don't think it's going to be a very long one in that, but one final session for a budget hearing, one final budget hearing before the adoption that occurs on September 30. And so we just need some of those actions to incorporate into the documents that we will present for you for final approval on the 30th. So we do need one more hearing from you.
And then we meet, when do we adopt the budget?
You adopt, the final budget is adopted on September 30. I think that's the Tuesday. Yep.
Ken would like to have one more meeting. Is anyone opposed to doing it directly after the commission meeting on next week, Tuesday, if we have a shorter agenda next week, if that is still possible?
The only conflict we might have, and I do need, I mean, one of the issues that we need to resolve is your discussion on elected officials' salaries. I know that's an outstanding item and that. But I know Carrie has some commitments in Lincoln County that I'll just have to be able to communicate with her to see how that timeframe is going to fall, because I know she'll want to be part of these discussions.
What time are you looking at, Ken?
Again, with the, probably, you know.
Like a lunch meeting? Is that what you're thinking?
No, I'm thinking right after, and I would say based on, you know, we've got a couple zoning things coming up, so I'm going to say between about 10:45, 11:00.
Okay. Right away in the morning on the 26th, if that possibly works? Is that a problem for anybody else?
And at least give, maybe gives Carrie a little flexibility to be down in Lincoln and then come back.
Do we need a motion or anything for that, just to?
No, I mean, if that's the direction, I will get the proper notices out, then we'll go from there.
I think we should, Ken will give us a list of what's on that?
Yes.
Of what's left, which is very small, and you can at least be thinking about it, and maybe we can get through stuff fairly quickly.
You bet.
Make that a short meeting. Okay. Is there any old business? Seeing none, we can adjourn into executive session for personnel.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn into executive session for personnel. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.